My call to order this meeting of the Lennox Township Board of Trustees Tuesday, January 3, 2023, at 6:30 PM. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of meeting agenda.
We have three changes that we need to make to tonight's agenda. Under unfinished business, we need to add letter B, which is the recreation plan that was tabled last month. On letter H, under new business, is setting a public hearing for the CDBG funds. And under I, new business, the 2023 MTA conference. I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There are none. Motion passes. Approval of minutes. Lee, Kathy.
Thank you. I'll make a motion we approve the minutes of the regular board of trustees meeting of December 5, 2022, as presented.
Second.
Motion by Treasurer Hall, signed by Trustee Gurley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There are none. Motion passes. Public announcements. Public now. Consent agenda. All items listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by the township board. They will be enacted by law motion according to established township rules. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board publicly requests act required to be. When you met the chair of the meeting, they remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion. If there is a variation on your agenda by item E or F, approval of consent agenda shall be by majority or con vocal, those present in the room.
So because of the holiday, we paid quite a few bills before the board meeting just to make sure that our obligations were met. So I need approval for $560,466.61 in invoices that were paid during the month. Right now, I also need approval of $1,043.71 for invoices to be paid for a total of $561,510.32.
I motion to approve the consent agenda and orders and bills in the amount of $561,510.32, as presented.
Second.
I have motion by Treasurer Hall, signed by Trustee Gurley. Deputy clerk, please call roll.
Hall.
Aye.
Gurley.
Aye.
Kendell.
Aye.
Clifford.
Aye.
Reader.
Aye.
Item approved for consent agenda, 2021-2022, out of notification.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. My name is Karen Shuppi. I'm at UHY. And I'm just here to present a really good overview of your audited financial statements for the year ended June 30 of 2022. I believe all of you should have your kind of booklet, if you will, of your audit report and then a couple of letters that are attached as well. And like I said, we'll just kind of go through a brief overview of the statements. The first part, the first part of the statements is the independent auditors' report. That's on pages one through three. These are your statements. However, it is our opinion. You do have an unmodified opinion. That's the best opinion you can have and what you strive for each year. And really stating that your statements are recorded in accordance with GAAP. The next part of the statements is the management discussion and analysis. That's on pages four through eight. That is a good narrative where they're written by management detailing some of the variances from this year and last year. The financial results as well as some upcoming events within the township as well, and some things to look forward to this next year. Next part of the statements is your entity-wide financial statements. And that is presenting the township on a full local basis of accounting. And really presents all your assets, all your current flows of resources, liabilities, and your net position of the township, including all your property and equipment, all your long-term debt, and everything as of June 30. That's on, or at least the statement of net position is on page nine. The statement of activities is on page 10 and 11. And that's really presenting the operations of the township as well on a full local basis of accounting. The next part of the statements being on page 12. And that is how you typically look at your financial statements. And so we'll kind of stick with those statements for the most part. And we'll really start with your general fund. So at the end of June, your general fund had assets of $2,545,490. Liabilities were at $362,491. You had deferred inflows of resources of $17,835. And your fund balance was at $2,165,164. Looking on page 15 at your statement of revenues, expenditures, and your changes of fund balance. Your general fund brought in $1,694,956 of revenue. Expenditures were at $1,617,439. And there were some transfers in from other funds of $13,050, giving you a change in your fund balance of a positive $90,567. If we kind of look back to page 12, I believe it is, looking at your fund balance. Non-spendable fund balance, or fund balance is really kind of split into a couple of different parts. Non-spendable assigned and unassigned at the end of this year. Non-spendable was at $38,886. Some fund balance has been assigned for future budget for this current year of $502,17. And that left an unsigned fund balance of $1,624,261 really to be used for operations and anything the board wants to spend it on or use it for. And your special revenue funds are also listed on page 15, or really looking at your revenues, expenditures on page 15 and on page 49. Your road fund had revenues of $168,355 and expenditures of $84,954, giving you a change in your fund balance of a positive $83,401. Your fire fund had revenue of $568,875, expenditures of $780,341, and other financing uses of $12,000, giving you a change in your fund balance of a decrease of $223,466. Your PTA revenue fund brought in revenues of $4274,022. Your expenditures were at $1,453,599. And your other financing uses or transfers to other funds were at $1,870,32, giving the PTA revenue fund a change in fund balance of an increase of $955,391. You also have your liquor law enforcement and monitoring fee funds. Those apply on page 49. Your liquor law enforcement had a change in fund balance of a positive $2,694. And your monitoring fee had a positive change in fund balance of $1,092. So fund balances that remained at the end of June for each of those funds. Your road fund had fund balance of $1,807,909. Your fire fund had $1,583,736. Your PTA revenue fund had a remaining $14,676,805. Inter liquor law enforcement fund had $47,861. And your monitoring fee was at $49,381. There's one other fund that's in the government suction. That's a debt service fund, your check to 20 drain fund, that had revenue of $35 and no expenditures this year. So your fund balance remaining at the end of June was $33,450. So looking at your enterprise fund or your own fund. We're looking at on page 18, your statement of net position. Assets at the end of June were at $36,622,629. You deferred inflows of over $274,836. Liabilities remaining at the end of June were at $17,670,644, leaving your net position at $18,226,821. Now, the majority of that net position is tied up with your capital and assets. That was at $18,98,974, leaving an unrestricted net position of $1,127,847. Going to page 19 and operations of your own fund this year. Revenues came in at over $2.2 million. They were at $2,219,152. Operating expenses before depreciation were at $1,207,538. Depreciation expense for the year was $979,527, giving you an operating income this year of $32,887. And there are also some non-operating revenues and expenses totaling $126,594. And then capital contributions came in at $162,406 and transfers in from other funds of $1,868,982. So that gave you a change in your net position, an increase of $2,198,869. Really looking at your working capital for current year, really your current assets and current liabilities. You did have a net working capital at the end of June of $1,127,847. That is a pretty good increase from last year, which was at $11,687. So definitely an improvement on your net working capital there. And then the other fund that's in the statements is a custodial fund, really your tax fund. And the amount that was collected this year from taxes for other governmental units was $10,916,286. And that was also payments to other governmental units that were made during the year as well. That really covers the statement part of your financial statements. There are also a couple of letters that should be attached in there. An independent auditors' report on internal control as well as an audit communication letter. There are a couple of recommendations in both of those letters that we had gone over with management in a meeting a couple of weeks ago. But essentially, that is your audit. Any questions? And I just want to say thank you. I know it takes a lot to pull everything together for us. My man Kathy and all their staff really pulled a lot of information for us. It's very much appreciated. And I think our audit went very well this year. So, thank you.
All right, moving on. Unfinished business. Item A, food truck ordinances and ordinance proposal. Mr. Caskey.
As of this afternoon, we have had made some revisions to our food truck ordinance. But in discussions with our township attorney, we still think it's best to institute a moratorium at this time to give us more time to look at some of the ramifications of what our ordinance would be and how they'd affect existing conditions, existing food trucks. So I'm recommending the adoption of a moratorium, as prepared by Mr. Adams.
If approved, this resolution will be number 2023-01. Resolution to adopt ordinance to impose a moratorium on the issuance of permits, licenses, or approvals for food trucks. At the regular meeting of the Township Board of Lennox Township, Macomb County, Michigan, held at the Township Hall and set Township on the third day of January 2023 at 6:30 PM. Whereas Township General Ordinance Statute, Michigan Public Act 246 of 1945, as amended, authorizes the Township Board to adopt ordinances regulating the public health, safety, and general welfare of persons and property. And whereas pursuant to the Michigan zoning enabling act, Act 110 of 2016, MZEA, the township has the authority to establish reasonable land use regulations to protect the public health, safety, and welfare in a manner consistent with applicable Michigan law. And whereas Township of Lennox does not currently have in place a specific food truck ordinance. And whereas the Township of Lennox has experienced increased interest in food truck operations. And whereas is therefore in the best interest of the Lennox Township Board to study the need, feasibility, and any safety issues inherent in food truck operation. And whereas Township of Lennox is committed to protecting the health, safety, and welfare of its residents as well as the prosperity of businesses located in our community. And whereas the state of Michigan through the Michigan Food Law and the Michigan Modified FDA Food Code requires licensing for temporary food service establishment, mobile phone food service establishment, and special transitory food unit to protect the health and safety. And whereas Township desires to consider the best way to address permitting and/or regulating food trucks consistent with Michigan law to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of township residents as well as the current township food service establishments. And whereas imposing a moratorium on a limited, temporary basis, 30 days, is reasonable and necessary to allow time for the development of an appropriate ordinance. Now therefore, the Township of Lennox adopts the following resolution. The Township hereby places a moratorium on the issuance of permits, licenses, or approvals for certain uses of property related to food trucks as defined above until February 6, 2023. I said all that so that I could say I would like to make a motion that the Township passes the moratorium identified as resolution number 2023 to be effective until February 6 of 2023. Second.
I have motion by Court Kendell, signed by Treasurer Hall. Deputy clerk, please call roll.
Kendell.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Gurley.
Aye.
Reader.
Aye.
Clifford.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item B, recreation plan adoption. Mr. Caskey.
Recreation plan has been prepared in compliance with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources guidelines for a recreation plan, which is required prior to receiving and applying credit grants under the Department of Natural Resources. We've held public hearings as required. We've also posted the plan on the website for interested people to look at. Recommend approval and signature of the resolution.
Oh, once you see why I have a resolution. Karen, did we prepare a resolution?
We did not.
I've got one of my own.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. Yes, this is it. See, we got my name on it. So if passed, this resolution would be 2023-02. The Lennox Township Recreation Plan Resolution of Adoption, Lennox Township Board of Trustees. Whereas Lennox Township has undertaken a five-year partisan recreation plan, which describes the physical future features, the existing recreation facilities, and the desired actions to be taken to improve and maintain recreation facilities during the period from 2022 through 2026. And whereas the draft 2022 through 2026 recreation plan was posted to the township website on October 4, 2022. Whereas a notice of a public hearing held December 5, 2022 was given one publication in the Voice newspaper on October 19, 2022. Whereas a public hearing was conducted by the Lennox Township Board of Trustees on December 5, 2022 at the Lennox Township Municipal Offices to provide an opportunity for citizens to officially comment on the draft 2022-2026 Recreation Plan. And whereas the Township Board of Trustees has developed a plan for the benefit of the entire community and to adopt the plan as a document to assist in meeting the recreation needs of the community. And whereas the Lennox Township Board of Trustees voted to adopt the 2022 through 2026 Recreation Plan at a regular meeting held on January 3, 2023. Now therefore, big result, the Lennox Township Board of Trustees hereby adopts the 2022 through 2026 Lennox Township Recreation Plan as a guide for improving recreation for the residents of Macomb, Macomb, Lennox Township. Sorry about that. Once again, that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Resolution of Adoption of the Recreation Plan Number 2023-02.
Second.
I have motion by Court Kendell, signed by Treasurer Gurley. Deputy clerk, please call roll.
Kendell.
Aye.
Gurley.
Aye.
Clifford.
Aye.
Reader.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Motion passes. New business. Item A, zoning ordinance amendment, section 18, 15, until the structures utility transmission systems, wireless transmission, and section relay towers. Mr. Caskey.
We were contacted, as many of you know, by ITC, their regulated utility of the Public Service Commission. And they pointed out to us that our ordinance was contradictory. Basically, our ordinance, essential services like they are exempt from zoning controls. And we met with several officials here, myself and Aladdis, and the ITC attorneys met with their transmitted emails back and forth, I think, with Aladdis, and came up with an amendment to our zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance basically clarifies this contradiction. He'll want to put a planning commission. They recommend approval to the township board.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the zoning ordinance amendment in section 1815, utility structures, utility transmission systems, wireless transmission, and reception in relay towers, as presented.
Second. I have motion by Court Kendell, signed by Treasurer Clifford. Deputy clerk, please call roll.
Kendell.
Aye.
Clifford.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Reader.
Aye.
Gurley.
Aye.
All right. Item B, code of ordinances codification. Mr. Caskey.
This is something that's been ongoing for several months now. It's probably started when COVID was in its height. We took all the township ordinances, organized them, in many cases, re-typed them, and put them in a format by section according to categories. One might be building and development, and the other might be traffic. In front of you, or you should have at least a copy or digital copy of the codified ordinance. Everything is now legally formatted by chapters and sections. This was a combined effort by a lot of staff. Staff that has typed it, and staff that has reviewed, and staff that has organized. Particularly, the clerk's office has been involved in this. Like I said, this has been a long time coming, but I think what we're going to have now is a very organized ordinance in a nice format in which to insert amendments.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the code of ordinances codification as presented.
Second.
I have motion by Court Kendell, signed by Treasurer Hall. Deputy clerk, please call roll.
Kendell.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Reader.
Aye.
Clifford.
Aye.
Gurley.
Item C, fire department staff physicals proposal. Mr. White.
Mr. Speaker, the board has been longstanding cracks in Lennox Fire Department conduct physicals. How are firefighters? There's a company that we hired called BioCare that actually brings in a big, like motor coach. They do the physicals out and make sure folks are in the best possible fitness for duty as they can be and ensure that we don't have some, at least hopefully reduce the possibility of some on-seed tragedy. We put those off a little bit during COVID because we didn't want to be gathering everybody in that kind of small space that is that motor coach that is used by those firms. And the chief and I had made decisions to put that off for a couple of years. This year, we budgeted to bring that practice back. Like I said, a sufficient amount of COVID was included in the current budget. What I would recommend the board does tonight is I provided a proposal that was based on the number of firefighters that we have today, which basically broke down about $670 per firefighter. The physicals won't be done till March. That's when we're scheduled to go forward. So I'd like to suggest to the board tonight is to make a motion to approve the physicals to be done and not exceed $670 per firefighter because we always hope that we'll be able to recruit additional firefighters between now and when the physicals are actually done. With that, we recommend the board approve the physicals in the amount of $670 per firefighter to be done by the BioCare.
I'll make a motion that the board approve fire department staff physicals through BioCare in the amount not to exceed $670 per firefighter.
Second. I have motion by Court Kendell, signed by Treasurer Clifford. Deputy clerk, please call roll.
Kendell.
Aye.
Clifford.
Aye.
Gurley.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Reader.
Aye.
Fire department structure modification proposal. Mr. White.
So this is really a modification of our wage structure that I have in front of the board tonight. What I would start with sharing with the board is this. Never did I believe I'd see a day in my career when one of the biggest challenges that befalls is whether it's in the fire service EMS or even the sheriff's department who had, you know, signs up in front of our building here. Trying to hire help would be that we can't find people interested in doing public safety work. They just, for many, many reasons, we could spend hours debating. The people wanting to do that kind of work just don't exist anymore. So we've really had to think in all of our worlds a bit outside the box or a bit of that, you know, saying we can't do things the way we've always done them and hope to succeed, especially when it comes to the recruitment and retention of staff. So after a number of months, actually, where Chief Hart and I met to discuss So, after a number of months, actually, where Chief Hart, me and I met to discuss options for possibly being able to ensure we have sufficient-sized firefighting force, we came up with an idea to have basically two tiers of persons within our firefighters, within our fire department. One would be what we refer to as a regular firefighter. These are the firefighters that respond to every type of call that there is, everything from wires down to medics, to the actual fires and technical rescues that occur on counter accidents and things of that nature. The second tier would be for a smaller subset of firefighters that have interest in being involved in the fire department, but for various reasons, family, work-life balance kind of reasons and other things, just don't have the complete time to commit to going to every type of fire. But they want to be trained, they want to be involved in the community's fire department, and they want to be there for the larger scale events that occur, where we need more people. We don't need as many people on medical ground as we do on a host fire, for instance. And this would make a sharp pathway for those folks to still be members of our fire department. And so, basically, what I have in front of you is a document called firefighter tier two wage proposal. And that wage proposal basically increases the pay for our regular firefighters. They've always had a break at the fire department between firefighters of over and under five years of service, if you will, so that's not something new, that's been there since before my time. And it increases the wages for those two regular firefighter levels to $24.50 and $23.75 respectively, and maintains the rate of pay for current firefighters that would be eligible to be part of this tier two group. And so, those wages were already set at $22 and $20.68 in the current budget. The, we have ample dollars in our lineup for wages at this point in time. A number of dollars have been gone unspent this year. We always budget with the hopes of higher recruiting than many departments are ever to have achieved these days. We want to have that good problem of having too many firefighters, if you will, coming into our department. But since we haven't, there is adequate dollars there to afford this change. Based on the current number of firefighters, a rough calculation would be a total cost of about $10,000 for the remainder of the year, is what we'll need to make this change in wages. So with that, I'm asking the board to approve the new recommended wages beginning January 1 of 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve modified fire department pay structure as recommended by Public Safety Director Joplin.
I second.
I have motion by Treasurer Arnold, signed by Treasurer Arnold, Detective Court, please call the board.
Arnold?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Kandell?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item B, your employee guidelines revision.
So, most of you are aware that we had an employee manual for our employees that was about seventy pages long, and very difficult to keep up with as far as every time a policy changed, or anything like that. So, the clerk's office embarked upon setting up a policy manual that has each policy listed separately, so that when there is a change to a policy, we do not have to redo the sixty-four page book that the employees have. So, that's what this is. And then, I also had a couple of quick little meetings with Mr. Addis over what we needed to include in a employee guide, per se. And so, I redid the employee guide, and then we, my staff redid the policy manual, so that when we have a new employee, they will get the employee guide and a USB that has all of the policies on them, and they'll be able to review them that way. And, like I said, the whole purpose is that in the past, every time there's been a policy revision, that whole book had to be redone. And this way, it just makes it easier, it makes it easier for us to change a policy, put it in the binder, slip it on the hard drive of the computer, and then it's there for everybody to see it. You guys should have gotten USB drives in your mailbox some point during the first part of the month that had all the disinformation on it. I would make a motion to approve the revision of the policy manual employee guidelines. Second.
I have motion by Treasurer Arnold, signed by Treasurer Arnold, Detective Court, please call the board.
Arnold?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Kandell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Item F, planning commission appointment. Mr. Gray.
Assuming the supervisor's office is coming forward with the request for planning commission appointment, this is a request to have a recommendation from Supervisor Reader to reappoint, excuse me, Linda Rosio, the planning commission, for a three-year term expiring 12/31/2025. Also, in addition to this planning commission appointment, Supervisor Reader is requesting to place Robert Pennell on the planning commission for a three-year term, also expiring 12/31 of 2025, coming out of the supervisor's office.
I believe that the proper protocol in this case is to do them one at a time, so if we ever have an employee issue with them, we don't have to deal with two, we're dealing with one at a time.
Correct. So with that, I'll bring it back and forward to the board for the first request under Linda Rosio, for a reappointment until December 31 of 2025.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Linda Rosio for a term of three years, as requested.
I'll second that. I have motion by Court Kandell, signed by the Chair, Detective Court, please call the board.
Kandell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
All right.
With that, thank you very much. Move on to the next one. This is a request for motion to approve Supervisor Reader's request to place Robert Pennell on the planning commission for a three-year term expiring 12/31/2025.
I'll motion to approve the recommendation of Supervisor Reader to place Robert Pennell on a planning commission for a three-year term expiring 12/31/25.
I'll second that motion. I have a motion by Treasurer Arnold, signed by the Chair, Detective Court, please call the board.
Arnold?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Kandell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. With that, I'll move on to the next request. Out of the supervisor's office this evening, item number G, is our motion request to approve the following residents to the Board of Review for two-year terms expiring in 12/31/2024. Once again, we'll do this one at a time. So the first request will be Marty Ix to be reappointed to the Board of Review until 12/31/2024, 12/25. Excuse me.
Do you have your turn?
Do your turn from January 1. So, 12/25. Sorry, I just read, I forgot, reading went over.
I make a motion that we approve the reappointment of Marty Ix to the Board of Review for a period of two years, ending on January 1, 2025.
Second.
I have motion by Court Kandell, signed by Treasurer Arnold, Detective Court, please call the board.
Kandell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
With that, I'm going to move forward and request that the board also consider and appoint Ron Wrighthold Ron Zemans for the same amount of time.
Make a motion that we approve the recommendation of Ron Zemans to the Board of Review for a term of two years, expiring on January 1, 2025.
Second.
I have motion by Court Kandell, signed by Treasurer Arnold, Detective Court, please call the board.
Kandell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Then I'm going to move on and request the third person. The supervisor's office is requesting that you also approve Genevieve Vrazek for the same amount of time, for two years, expiring 1/1/2025.
Make a motion to approve Genevieve Vrazek for the third seat on the Board of Review for the same term.
Second.
I have motion by Treasurer Arnold, signed by Treasurer Arnold, Detective Court, please call the board.
Clifford?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Kandell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Thank you very much. With that being said, also let it be known that supervisor's office is currently actively searching for alternative ultimate member for the Board of Review. We currently have someone in mind, but if there's anyone else that you may have forward, please bring him forward and let us know, so that we can have them review and apply for that position through the system.
All right, moving on. Item H, CBPG public hearing date.
Good evening. The board, the supervisor's office this evening is requesting that the board set the public hearing date for the February board meeting for the community block grant funding. Currently this year, from the information that we have, the Lennox Township's public service allocation will be 3,400. This will be set aside 2,000 automatically to the MCA chores set-aside program. That's automated now through the county. So that will leave an open amount of 1,400 to be allocated at the public meeting on February 6, I'm sorry. So we're asking for a public hearing at the order six. We need proper notification into the board and into the papers required by the county.
I would like to make a motion that we set the CBPG public hearing for February 6, 2023. Second.
All right. I have motion by Court Kandell, signed by Treasurer Arnold, Detective Court, please call the board.
Kandell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Item L, 2023 Michigan Township Association MTA Conference Request.
This year's MTA conference is scheduled for April 18 through 21. It is in Traverse City, and we're asking for approval for six people? We have five. We usually ask the planner if we want him to go, so I'm saying six just because. Unfortunately, the December MTA book did not have the cost. Do you have it?
It just said that a few days ago.
It just says it will be available in like December. The brochure that I have doesn't have a cost.
The early bird rate for a main conference attendee is $390 per person. That's by March 2.
Okay, so my motion would be that the board approves $390 for registration, hotel costs to be added later for six members to attend the 2023 MGA conference. One second.
I have motion by Court Kandell, signed by Treasurer Arnold, Detective Court, please call the board.
Kandell?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
All right. Hold it permanent. Call from the board.
Make a motion that we adjourn at 7:17. Second.
Motion by Lan, second by Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.